Good morning. Welcome to the Friday, November 15th, 2024 Meeting of the California Coastal Commission. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning to the meeting, calling the meeting to order, and ask for nothing. Whoops. Yeah, I ask for nothing. Just a sec. Okidok. All right, thank you so much. All right, so we'll start with roll call, please. Ms. Miller?
Commissioner Ekidi.
Here.
Commissioner Bajko. Commissioner Kalfi.
Here.
Commissioner Stripling.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Conkle.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Nara.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga. Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Chair Hart.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda changes. Commissioner Wilson is now here.
Thank you, Chair Hart. I can go over the agenda changes this morning, so.
Is that you, Mr. Schwang? Are you online?
Yes, I'm online.
Okay, it's like the disembodied voice. We can't see you, so just a sec.
Okay, there must be an issue with the.
There you are. Good morning. All right.
Morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we can turn to agenda changes. Item 10A, that's the city of Dana Point's LCP amendment on their housing zoning code update. This is a time extension only. That's moved to consent. Item 10B is the city of Laguna Beach LCP amendment on their zoning code update and housing programs and incentives. Again, a time extension only. That's moved to consent. Item 11A, it's application 52494 from Ava Equities LLC in Laguna Beach. That's moved to consent. Item 14A, it's application 624382. This is a state parks project in Torrey Pines for a stairway project. That's moved to consent. Item 14B, it's application 624479, another state parks project. This is for the revetment at Carter State Beach. That's moved to consent. And then item 15A, permit number 6530A1, that was withdrawn. And that concludes the agenda changes this morning.
All right, great. Thank you so much. All right, we're now going to, did I, do we do virtual meeting procedures? No, we skipped that. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Let's do virtual meeting procedures.
Okay, good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cows-cow-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSpan website. For those who wish to address the Commission today, can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and scannable QR code for paperless submissions are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during a general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 AM on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept the request to speak on an item up until the chair opens a hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission's staff at 562-477-9089. Again, that number is 562-477-9089. Staff will provide you with telephone call-in number and instructions on how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes virtual meeting procedures.
Thank you so much. All right, now, sorry about my flipping those two items, but now we're going to open general public comment. I just want to make a, let everyone know that this morning, we're going to have an hour of general public comment, so we'll be ending at about 10 minutes after 10:00. I know that, and I, we're so grateful that people are here to talk to us about what's important to them, because that's what's important to us. Saying that, if there's a group of people that all have a similar message, it would be great if you could consolidate, potentially have a couple spokespeople, and then have everyone rise to indicate their support for what folks are saying. But we'll see how it goes, see if we have time for everyone. I know we have 40 public commenters this morning, so chances are, we're not going to be able to fit everyone in an hour. So let's see how it goes. So let's begin with the first person, please.
So we'll start with people in the room. We'll start with John Elliott, Lucas Lux, and Jane Liu. If you hear your name, please come up to the podium.
Mr. Elliott, we're going to start the morning with a song? That's as good as it gets, in my opinion, and San Francisco appropriate. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, great. Good morning, Coastal Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Welcome to San Francisco. I'm here to celebrate, San Francisco just decided to set aside two miles of the, a former road to make it a public recreation space, which it's my favorite place. I love it very much. I want to teach my son to ride his bike there. I'll get less emotional in the song. So, but with loving and empathy for our neighbors who are concerned about traffic, I wrote this song for them and also to let them know there's a six-lane highway a few blocks away. So. Just take a left on Lincoln and then be on your way. Take a left on Lincoln so kids can have a place to play, because the ocean is for everyone, not just for you to drive. So take a left on Lincoln and keep the dream alive. The dream of open, inclusive, equitable, accessible spaces. The dream of loving and laughing and joyous community faces. The dream of making different choices in a climate crisis emergency. Do it for you, do it for them, do it for the human family. And take a left on Lincoln and head right out of town. And then we all can go down to the coast together and walk and roll and wander around, because the ocean is for everyone, not just for you to drive. So take a left on Lincoln and keep the dream alive. Thank you.
Oh, wow. That is just over the top.
Under two minutes.
Congratulations.
Under two minutes, too.
Congratulations on Measure K as well. All right, that was awesome. Good morning, Mr. Lux.
That is extremely difficult to follow.
Don't bother.
John is my artist friend. He reminds me that I'm his lawyer friend, so I'll sound a little bit more like a lawyer. But we met earlier this year. My name's Lucas Lux and the board president of Friends of Great Highway Park. You've met John, you'll meet my friend Jane in a moment. We're an all-volunteer nonprofit focusing on making San Francisco's coast more accessible. And we met you in Sacramento, and we are excited to come back today. We had slides, but we can skip them. We are excited to come back today with an exciting update, that San Francisco voters confirmed last week that they share our vision to turn the Great Highway into something even greater, Ocean Beach Park. As you may recall, San Francisco has piloted the use of part of the Great Highway as a coastal promenade for over four years, and people love it. The weekend-only pilot has become the city's third most visited park, opening up the coast for people of all abilities to enjoy in more ways than are possible on the beach itself. And now, with the voter approval of Proposition K, our city is beginning the process to turn the space into a full-time coastal park. The city agencies will partner with the Coastal Commission, but we came to share an update on the work that we're doing for our part. And my colleague Jane and I will cover that in two parts, access and ecology. On the access front, the coast belongs to everybody, so we're pleased that all San Franciscans had a say in the future of the Great Highway. And now that they've approved a coastal park future, we're getting to work to make the most of it in a couple of ways. First, in Sacramento, we spoke about the community programming that we do to ensure that the coast is a welcoming and inviting space for everybody in our community. We're going to keep that rolling, whether it's Tai Chi, live music, chair yoga, or meeting Santa. Our goal is that our events program speaks to every part of the diverse community in San Francisco. Second, we're partnering with the SF Rec and Park Department on park improvements to enhance the visitor experience to our coast. In the near term, we're partnering on improvements like seating, art, small play structures. And thinking to the future, we're working with landscape architects who helped create Chrissy Field to work on a ground-up community vision for the future of our coast that, for us, is based in four principles: community, accessibility, environmental stewardship, and joy. That type of process has created some of San Francisco's greatest parks, like Chrissy Field and India Basin, and we look forward to digging into that process with our neighbors and the Coastal Commission to make the most of this amazing part of the California coast that we get to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Liu, followed by Eric Martinez and Mary Ann Firda.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jane, a fellow board member of Friends of Great Highway Park. Building on what my friend Lucas already shared, I want to expand on the significant ecological benefits that Ocean Beach Park will provide. Just last month, the SF Estuary Institute released a report recognizing that converting the Great Highway into a park promenade is, offers the greatest and most immediate ecological benefits to Ocean Beach. This is due, in part, to the removal of speeding traffic and the reduction of light and noise pollution, which is better for wildlife. Friends of Great Highway Park has already helped to start a revegetation project to improve biodiversity along Ocean Beach. In partnership with Surf Rider Foundation, the SF Rec and Park Department, and GG NRA, we've begun dune restoration and ecological revegetation work along Ocean Beach. This project aims to increase the abundance of native species, manage sand drift, and restore critical habitats. We look forward to planting more native species ahead of this winter's rainy season. As we confront the growing challenges of climate change, Ocean Beach Park has the potential to be a flagship example of climate adaptation and resilience. These early ecological improvements are just the beginning, and we're eager to continue advancing this work. We look forward to working together with our local agencies and the Commission to continue our work of expanding access and ecological health along our urban coastline. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and dedication to these important issues along all of California's coast. And then I was going to introduce John, but he already performed, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, now that we've heard that amazing performance, we'll go back to our no-clapping rule. So if you want to express your support, just wave your hands like that. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Eric Martinez, and this is my first time doing public comment as a citizen, I guess. As some of you all know, I worked for your agency for about six years, up until earlier this year. It goes without saying that you have an amazing staff at your service and at the service of the people of California, but I'm afraid that you're doing a huge disservice to your staff. In the six years that I was at your agency, I saw so many amazing people leave. The majority of us left because at some point, we cannot keep sacrificing our own lives for the sake of protecting the coast. The salaries you provide are not enough for anyone who wishes to start a family or even have a chance at a decent living, at a decent life in the coastal cities where they are required to live. Salaries at your agency are much, much lower than the federal, state, and local counterparts that we work along with, which makes it hard for people to stay. But you already know this, you've been hearing this for years, and it's way past due to actually do something about it. The other point I want to make is about staff professional development. While it is important to recruit new, diverse staff, it is also important to acknowledge and promote staff that has remained committed to your mission despite the low salaries. Extremely qualified people are disillusioned and disincentivized because they don't feel like they are being valued. I know this because I was one of them. Your staff has given a lot to this agency, only to get mere words of support. Those words and feelings of understanding mean nothing without proper action. That is why I'm asking you to please do anything and everything you can to truly obtain better salaries for your staff. Use your influence to help make real changes. Do not put the onus of this work on your already overworked staff. For the executive team, I love you and I respect you all, but I ask you to really take a look at how you value your long-term staff. Long-term isn't 20-plus years anymore. Long-term is now anyone who you can keep past through three years. I've seen you lose people in such, in much less time, so unless you start valuing and developing your committed staff more, you will continue to lose these talented people you say you value so much. Thank you, and I hope this serves as a wake call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward with that message, which we all are pretty well aware of. It's a bad situation.
Mary Ann Firda, and then we'll move on to Zoom speakers, starting with Adam Leverens, Susan Simon, and then Samantha McDonald.
You know what I'm thinking, Jose? I think we should stick with people in the room, so if that's going to be the group, we'll go to that, and then we'll go to Zoom. Let's approach it that way.
Okay. Good morning, Commission. Like the previous speaker, this is my first time public speaking at a commission. So I thank you for taking action to protect our coast. Please continue to take strong action to halt the restart of the unstable Sable project and continue to prevent unauthorized work. This old corroded pipeline, not having been in operation for almost a decade, will be impossible to be restored, and so will spill again, some estimates indicate annually. All activities in the coastal zone ought to be subject to a coastal development permit before any additional work takes place. We know that has not happened in this case. The restart process is moving forward without this, and so without oversight, even without consideration to the wildlife and local population, a spill will be disruptive and thus economically expensive, negatively impacting the tourists as well as other industries. I've seen the devastation caused by such spills as a sea kayaker. I have a particular affinity for marine wildlife. I have volunteered for coastal cleanup efforts. It is devastating and disgusting. So please support the unique beauty and majesty of our coastline. Thank you for hearing my plea, especially after the election. We know that we cannot count on federal agencies for such protection, so I'm particularly grateful for your presence. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to, we'll continue with in-person speakers with Maureen Ellenberger, Irene Cook, and Brady Bradshaw. If you heard your name, please step up to the podium.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Maureen Ellenberger. I'm a Santa Barbara resident, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Sierra Club of Santa Barbara and Ventura Chapter, as well as the Fearless Grandmothers of Santa Barbara, and I'm a UC Climate Steward. I want to first thank you for your vigilant protection of our coast, particularly your recent enforcement actions against unauthorized development in our coastal zone. Your oversight is critical to our community's well-being. I'm here today with urgent concerns about the proposed restart of the old corroded pipeline, now owned by Sable Offshore, the same pipeline that ruptured in 2015 at Rofu Fio, causing one of California's worst oil spills. The situation is particularly alarming because Sable is a startup that borrowed 99% of the money they bought the assets from, from Exxon. They borrowed that money from Exxon to buy those assets. They have no money of their own. And they plan to start this operation without adequate environmental review. The risks are severe and documented. The pipeline and platforms have exceeded their designated lifespans, which were 30 and 35 years. Preliminary environmental reports warn of potential spills annually. The Los Flores Canyon processing facility sits in a high-fire zone that's seen three fires since 2015. The operator is seeking waivers from critical safety measures, including the very corrosion protections whose failure caused the 2015 disaster. Your commission has clear authority and responsibility here. The operator has already violated the Coastal Act with unauthorized development activities in September and October of 2024. This pattern of behavior demands thorough scrutiny before any restart is considered. I respectfully urge you to require a comprehensive environmental review under CEQA. This isn't just about one pipeline. It's about protecting and fighting for our newly designated Schumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our safety.
Thank you. Next, we have Irene Cook, followed by Brady Bradshaw and Ilanka Slatar.
Good morning. The elders from Santa Barbara Society of Fearless Grandmothers made the trip to San Francisco today to try to focus your attention on the biggest environmental threat to the central coast, the restart of the pipeline that you've been hearing about. Our grandmothers' group is committed to nonviolent action, demanding urgent measures to address our earth's climate emergency. The grandmothers remember the 2015 oil spill, the nauseating stench that permeated the air, the oil that poisoned 150 miles of coastline, closed beaches for months, suffocated countless marine mammals, fish, and birds, and harmed the physical and economic health of our citizens. The felony convictions that followed that disaster are evidence of Big Oil's reckless and criminal disregard for the health and safety of our people and planet. The current proposal would start, restart the pipeline and other facilities, as Maureen mentioned, have far exceeded their expected lifespans. It's not a matter of if, but when this will spill. The project also brings back the largest single source of greenhouse gas emissions in our county, making it impossible to reach our climate goals. So we're counting on our state agencies to require the environmental review that is obviously needed to protect the public and the sensitive ecosystems of the coast. We so appreciate the attention you've already given this project and urge you to continue to exercise your broad enforcement powers to protect our coast. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Irene Cook.
Thank you. Next, we have Brady Bradshaw, followed by Ilanka Slatar and Michael Lynch.
Good morning. I'm Brady Bradshaw at the Center for Biological Diversity. I just want to say that I know it's Friday, and we just all want to go to that coastal highway and enjoy it, so I just want to encourage, I'm going to encourage myself and others to listen to what people say and not repeat a bunch of things, and just say what we really, really heart of the matter. I'm just going to cover some things that haven't been, I guess, and so I just want to continue to urge the Coastal Commission to use its broad authority in this, in this matter. The Coastal Commission is well aware about the oil spill and all the damage that it caused, and it caused about 450,000 gallons of oil to spill on the coast. The activity that would resume on this pipeline would be a major increase in oil production on the coast. Exxon and Sable, they've stated that they're interested in well stimulation, which is a new, a new matter. That's something that we haven't seen before, and so, or well acidization, so we want to be sure that none of that happens. And the installations, the repairs, and the maintenance that are happening on the pipeline route, those are additions to the, to the pipeline and would actually expand the facilities and add to them. So we believe that these are all subject to a coastal development permit and should be evaluated under that framework, as, as should be the valve installation and the actual restart itself. So, and, and we want, we encourage the Commission to require these permits to take place before any of that additional work is completed. And so, yeah, I just, this is the kind of, the leadership, the kind of leadership that Californians expect and deserve and need right now, and we're counting on you to make sure that Sable adheres to the law and undergoes a full review of these activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ilanka Slatar, Michael Lynch, and Jane Perry.
Hello, everybody, and thank you so much for your attention and for opening up a public space for comment. My name is Ilanka Slatar, and I am an organizer with Oil and Gas Action Network, and I'm also a scientist. I'm one of those that got really sick and tired of not seeing enough happening within our state agencies. I worked for the California Air Resources Board for six years, seven years, and then went to the other side, because we, we need to take bolder action. We know everything in science is telling us that if we don't actually start declining our emissions, we're going to see runaway climate change. And you have an opportunity today with the decision that's ahead of you to enforce the law and hold these producers accountable for their mistakes. We have already seen that Sable is not able to follow the law. They were not able to follow your notice of violation. They continued on anyways. So that's the type of behavior that they've already demonstrated. How are we supposed to trust them to do a good job in re, 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 rebirbishing? That's the word. Mom brain, I just gave birth to a child three months ago, so, you know, words are escaping me. But I do hope that, that we can get our ducks in a row as a society, so that when my child is grown, that we're not facing the same problems that we still are today with fossil fuels, with oil spills, with runaway climate change. I hope that when, when he's grown, that we can, I can focus on whatever else it is that he wants to do and not have to drop everything to go be in the streets to take action, like, like how we all have to for our lives. Oh, is that my time? Dang. We can't trust them. They're not doing a good job, and so I, I hope that you can continue on your path. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have McCall Lynch, Jane Perry, Choshana Wexler.
Thank you for hearing us. I'm Michael Lynch. I'm part of the Fearless Grandmothers. We drove up here from Santa Barbara. It's a long drive, but it was worth it. I want to put a face on how this is impacting us. We've been going to city, to county council meetings. The county doesn't feel it has the authority to act on this as much as they do want to. We're appealing to you. Please, we need help. When the spill happened, it didn't just close the beach, it closed all the beaches. It totally destroyed any, any tourism, but it also stank. It made people who lived anywhere near the area extremely ill. They couldn't work for months. It was that bad. It was a toxic zone. We couldn't go there to help. We couldn't rescue animals because we couldn't go near it. People went in hazmat suits, and for good reason. You really had to keep that stuff off of you. That's how toxic this is, that what we're talking about. And when it leaks, which apparently from reports, reliable reports say it's likely, very likely, to leak once a year and go right back in the ocean and do the same thing again. It's an old pipeline. We all know that. Please, we have rules for reviewing these things. Please make sure all these rules are followed and we get a thorough review. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Perry, Choshana Wexler. Next, we have Jane Perry, Shoshana Wexler, and Frances Tinney.
I'm Dr. Jane Perry, retired teacher and researcher with UC Berkeley specializing in young children. I'm a member of 1,000 Grandmothers for Future Generations. I love and respect water and her beings, and I stand with the Santa Barbara community and all communities fighting oil spills and fossil fuel extraction. I hope you and your loved ones are safe and healthy and have everything that you need. I'm truly grateful to the commission for your history of strong action protecting our coast and especially in alerting Sable of their unauthorized work. You are a partner, and I encourage you to keep taking strong action. Halt Sable's pipeline restart and prevent their unauthorized work. To put this in context, not all of us lived through the multiple pandemics. We did. We hold the future that others lost. I commend you for understanding that we are related to all beings and that our collective actions come from a place of nurturing and relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shoshana Wexler, followed by Frances Tinney and Heather McLeod.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Shoshana Wexler. I'm with the Sunflower Alliance, and I want to thank you so much for the firm stance that you've taken with the reckless Texas drilling scofflaws who are putting our beautiful California coast under serious threat. Your commission was formed in response to the apocalyptic oil spill that occurred in 1969, an event that I remember only too well. I was a student at UC Santa Cruz up the coast a bit, and that spill felt like an extension of the war that was raging at that time across the Pacific. And that spill has everything to do with the environmental work I am doing now in my 70s to end fossil fuel extraction in this state. I urge you to heed the sensible, well-founded legal advice in the Center for Biological Diversity's October 7th letter to you. It's really, really, really good argument. The pipeline under review is old and corroded. It cannot be restored to safe use. We know that what happened 56 years ago and again in 2015 could happen again. Please use every legal and enforcement remedy you have at your disposal to prevent another disaster in the making. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Frances Tinney, followed by Heather McLeod and Sarah Gao.
Good morning. My name is Frances Tinney with the Center for Biological Diversity. I won't repeat. I'll just say thank you so much for standing up to Sable on behalf of all of the people and species that rely on a healthy coast, and please continue to stand strong.
Thank you. Next, Heather McLeod, followed by Sarah Gao and Miyoko Sakashida.
It's really exciting seeing you all here. Ah, where to start? My name is Heather McLeod. I'm from Oakland, California, but when I was a little girl, I lived in Ventura, and we loved the beach, and we spent a lot of time in the water. And every time we came home, we had to stop by the garage before we went in the house to get a rag dipped in turpentine so that we could wipe the oil off of our bodies, which is kind of appalling that parents gave kids turpentine to rub on their bodies, but, you know, anyway. I guess, I, so the Center for Biological Diversity knows the details, and, and I support them on the details, but what I want you to know is that we love you and we are so grateful for the work you do protecting the coast and the ocean we love. It is revolutionary, your stance that this is all of ours. And we want you to know that we're behind you and that as hard things come down in the next four years, think of us as a resource, that we have your back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Gao, followed by Miyoko Sakashida and Emily Jeffers.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Gao, and I am a resident here in San Francisco as well. Oh, thank you for that tip. I'm also a member of Climate Change Makers, which is a national network of everyday people trying to take action on the ever worsening climate emergency. Like so many folks who spoke before me, I would like to thank the commissioners for your excellent work to safeguard our coastlines by issuing a warning to Sable for their unauthorized work. And like so many others before me, I also urge you to do everything within your power to halt this dangerous restart of a corroded pipeline. We know from decades of painful experience that it is only a matter of when, not if, but when pipelines like this will cause another disaster, disaster that will cause revocable harm to coastal communities, some of the most biodiverse ecosystems in the world, threatened and already endangered species that are struggling under the climate crisis. And this harm cannot just be written away with a meager check. Meanwhile, the out-of-state company profiting at our expense with no ties or stake in any of our communities and well-being under the name Sable this time around can just abandon the mess when disaster strikes and leave it corroding away in our waters again. As someone who's a biologist, who regularly enjoys the many natural gifts our coastlines was blessed with, who experiences ever worsening wildfires, storms, erosion that our state experiences due to the climate crisis and the fossil fuels that drive it, again, I strongly urge you to do everything in your power to halt this restart. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Miyoko Sakashida, followed by Emily Jeffers and Spencer Jaimez.
Good morning. I'm Miyoko Sakashida. I'm an attorney with the Center for Biological Diversity, and I really want to thank the commission for your oversight of the Santa Inez unit and pipeline system and protecting our coast. In 2018, I went on an independent delegation to go look at the platforms in the Santa Barbara Channel, and what I saw was alarming. They are old, and they are rusty, and they are an accident waiting to happen, just like in 2015, when the pipeline connected to them, had a catastrophic spill that destroyed our coast. So first of all, I'd like to ask the Coastal Commission to require a coastal development permit on the entire restart. The initial final development plan for the project, for a major modification, it requires a new or revised permit. And here, after a catastrophic spill, 10 years idle, a pipeline that does not function as it was designed, as well as all the work they're doing to bring the pipeline back into , into operation, those are major modifications, and they require a new coastal development permit. It's outlived its intended lifespan, produced more oil and more air pollution than the initial approval documents. Secondly, I'd like to encourage the Coastal Commission to seek consistency review over the federal authorizations that are occurring for the restart of the Santa Inez unit. This includes the applications for permits to drill and modify to unplug the wells as well as other activities. In closing, CAL FIRE should not be allowing the restart of this pipeline, and especially not without CEQA review, but the Coastal Commission is the one body that stands between an unlawful and unsafe restart, and so we want to really thank you for doing your job.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily Jeffers, followed by Spencer James and Lenore Olmsted.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Emily Jeffers. I'm an attorney with the Center for Biological Diversity. Thank you for, for hearing me this morning and the opportunity to speak. I last spoke before you in 2013, shortly after it came to light that offshore fracking and the dumping of up to 9 billion gallons of produced water came to light. That was happening on the outer continental shelf without consistency review from the Coastal Commission. There, the Coastal Commission's swift action in challenging the federal government's authorization of offshore fracking ultimately resulted in a moratorium on the practice. To this day, offshore fracking is prohibited in federal waters off the coast of California. I'm asking the commission for similarly bold action today. We need accountability to ensure that another spill from the Santa Inez unit won't foul our coast and communities. I echo my colleague Miyoko's urge to require Sable to obtain a coastal development permit for these substantial modifications to the pipeline. In addition, like offshore fracking, the commission must demand consistency review with regard to the federal approvals needed to restart this aging infrastructure. Thank you for your leadership in protecting California's coast. Now more than ever, we need to ensure that California takes a strong stance to ensure our coastal resources are protected for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Spencer James, followed by Lenore Olmsted and Ivan Ditmars.
Aku aku, Spencer Cottie, Cleken Hil Siok Don Hil Kapapani Shomoloch Hinach Alamu Hilimu. My name is Spencer Jaimez, and I'm Smoich Chimash from Santa Barbara, and I'm also Ramato Shaloni, which is whose land we're on today. And I want to uplift everything that folks have said before me, from the Sierra Club and from, and Brady, from organization here from, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name even though you just said it. But I want to uplift our tribal concerns from Chimash folks, especially from folks who are ancestrally from the Gaviota Coast where this pipeline is at and have been displaced from. We want the urge the Coastal Commission to prioritize free and prior and informed consent as directed by UNDRIP, the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, in addition to engaging in meaningful consultation with the Chimash peoples from all Chimash nations, as well as to consider the long-term cultural and environmental impacts this project of Sable's pipeline, the restart, may have on the villages of Casio, Mikyu, and Akto Panalmatwe, and the neighboring communities of Chimash peoples, our animals and our plants and our water relatives. The health of our lands and our water is paramount to our survival as a human race, but also as our religion and our, our foodways, our food sovereignty, and as well as where we're from, our homes. Even though that we may not live there physically right now, that's still our home. But with the limited time I have, I really want to emphasize the consultation this commission needs to have with our tribes. We have the, the right, and we should have the right, to dictate and what happens in our territory because the, the long-lasting effects that this pipeline verse could happen and could have far lives the life expectancy of the state of California or the United States of America. We've been here for thousands of years, and we will continue to be here when the state goes away and when this country goes away. So thank you for your time and thank you for all your efforts and your work.
Thank you. Next, we have Lenore Olmsted, followed by Ivan Ditmars and Molly Morabito.
My name is Lenore Olmsted, and I'm with the 1,000 Grandmothers for Future Generations, and I live in Oakland, and this is the water puppet. As we know, water is life. I moved here 11 years ago, and I love this beautiful coastline, the marine sanctuaries, the sea lions, the otters, the many shorebirds. Thank you for all that you do to protect the coastline. I particularly thank you for the strong stand that you have taken to make sure that the Santa Inez unit restart is stopped until all proper oversight and environmental review is completed. Pipelines leak, and they have leaked terribly in the Santa Barbara region, and this proposed pipeline restart is with an old and corroded pipeline and not safe. But there is another point. New pipeline work is not needed. California has wind, solar, geothermal, and hydro energy and a new game changer, rapid expansion of battery storage capacity to meet California energy demands, demand needs. We do not need to accept ongoing pipeline, online pipeline leaks in order to have the energy we need. So the earth is warming, as we know, at alarmingly rapid rate. The main cause is the use of fossil fuels. We need to keep those fossil fuels not being used in the ground, and we have the alternatives now to do that. So please continue to require that all activities in the coastal region meet the requirements of coastal development permit before any additional work on the pipeline takes place. I deeply appreciate your service.
Thank you. Next, we have Ivan Ditmars, followed by Molly Morabito and Tracy Rogers-Brant.
Hi, my name is Ivan Ditmars with the Center for Biological Diversity. I grew up in the Bay Area, but traveled down to the Santa Barbara region often as a child to visit my grandparents. My memory from those years is of constant play in the water, and I've maintained that love throughout my life, going whale watching up and down the California coast. I want to thank all of you for the work that you've done so far in holding Sable to account for their unauthorized actions, and I want to urge you to continue exercising your authority to prevent this unanalyzed and dangerous pipeline project from starting up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Morabito, followed by Tracy Rogers-Brant and Diane Livia.
Hi there. I'll, I'll keep this short. My name is Molly Morabito, and I'm here today from Santa Cruz, California, where I'm lucky enough to live alongside our beautiful coast. I'm also here to urge the commission to use the full extent of its authority under the Coastal Act to ensure that Sable does not cause yet another major spill in the coastal zone. I echo the ask for the commission to require a coastal development permit, not just for the valve installation of these pipelines, which don't actually prevent spills, but merely try to limit the volume of oil that would gush into the ocean in the event of a spill, and also for all maintenance and repair work and for the restart of the pipeline itself. Thank you for the action you've taken so far. We're trusting you to protect our coastline from yet another devastating oil disaster, and I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tracy Rogers-Brant, followed by Diane Livia and Richard Freeman.
Hi, thank you. I, or I'm Tracy. I represent the Bay Delta Bioregion as well as a number of organizations, and I want to say thank you for everything you do. I want to thank everyone for showing up. I want to encourage increased solidarity in the face of our nation's precarious moment where artificial intelligence craves additional energy sources, and the world's richest man is now in the White House and has verbalized plans to support AI. And earlier this week, John Stankey, AT&amp;T's chief executive, warned leaders at the Fortune's Global Forum that America is not ready for the energy consumption that the AI revolution will take. There was a study published by Gartner also saying that it's forecasted that 40% of the data centers would face power shortages in the next three years. So while today we're largely talking about the Sable pipeline, we also know the Montezuma Hills project is coming and that there is evidence that Mr. Musk and Mr. Trump will be pushing for every pipeline to be reinstalled and reinitiated in an effort to support the AI needs. So again, I want to applaud all of your efforts, and hopefully California can be a beacon of hope in the four years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diane Livia, followed by Richard Freeman.
Hello, I'm Diane Livia. I live in Oakland, and I also am in my 70s, and I have watched oil spills and pipeline breaks and the despoiling of our coast, up and down this coast and in the bay, my entire life, and I'm kind of sick of it. You know this pipeline will fail, that's just a given, okay? Once again, our coast will be despoiled, killing animals, birds, fish, and vertebrates that are essential to the ecosystems. It's nice that they're furry and cute, but they are essential to the ecosystems, and the ecosystems are essential to human well-being. But there's a much bigger issue that other people have alluded to here that is much more harmful to our coast and to ourselves, and that is the idea that Sable, offshore corporation, or any business would consider itself above the law. Now, we know why they consider themselves above the law, because from the highest reaches in this country, the rich and the powerful openly are contemptuous of the law and have no intention of upholding it. So it falls to us and to you. They feel they can ignore the law, they feel they can ignore the actions taken to make them. them follow the law. This is a really terrifying thought because it is a huge threat, and the rule of law is kind of all we have left at this point, to protect our coast, to protect ourselves. We need courageous people in positions of authority to pledge themselves to uphold the rule of law. We need you to vigorously defend the Coastal Act, a great law that has served the people of California really well for 50 years. It's why we have a coast to go to, why we have a park we can walk through and get to the coast. That wouldn't even be a possibility without the Coastal Act. It would all be built up wall-to-wall, just like it is down in the farthest reaches of the state. Just as, okay, I'm just going to call on Brad Raffensperger, who stood on the precipice in 2020 and fell on the side of the rule of law.
Thank you so much. You know, we have so many votes.
I ask you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. Our last in-person speaker is Richard Freeman, then we'll move on to our Zoom speakers, starting with Ryan Smith, Jeremy Franco, and Ken Hoff.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you very much for holding this hearing and taking all our comments on an assent with all of the previous speakers. And just a brief story, 1973, I was living in Los Angeles, and I drove up with a friend and went jogging on the beach in Goleta. And I don't know how this worked, but I didn't notice a plethora of oil on the beach, so I started jogging, and I jogged for quite a while, several miles. And I didn't know the turpentine trick at the time. So, when I got back, my soles were covered, toes and soles were covered. Took me hours to get the tar off of my feet. So, just that image has always stayed with me. And just as a closing thought, I don't envy anyone and admire anyone who has the courage to stand up to the arrogance, hubris, and entitlement of the oil industry. It is staggering. Thank you.
Jose, before we go to Zoom, I just want to make a brief statement. First of all, on behalf of all of us, thank you all so much for coming. We really, really, really appreciate it. People, when they go out of their way, drive long distances, and come here and speak with us, it's just so meaningful. We're going to have a, not necessarily a response, but we're going to have our enforcement report that addresses the issue that you're concerned about as soon as we finish with the Zoom comments. So, it shouldn't be more than maybe 15, 20 minutes, and we're going to advance that so you folks don't have to wait here through the rest of the hearing. Thanks, Jose.
Okay, so we'll start with our Zoom speakers, starting with Ryan Smith, followed by Jeremy Franco and Ken Hoff. Ryan, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Smith, and I'm a legal expert with the Environmental Defense Center. My testimony today relates to Sable Offshore Corporation's attempt to restart the Los Flores Pipeline System. I want to thank the commission for their hard work and share some additional comments. When this pipeline system was first constructed about 40 years ago, it was designed with a key safety feature, cathodic protection. Cathodic protection is a mitigation feature that is intended to prevent external corrosion in oil and gas pipelines. When the environmental impact report was prepared for these pipelines in 1985, it identified cathodic protection as being a, quote, "critical importance to the environment and the project." It specifically envisioned that the entire pipeline would be protected from corrosion with cathodic protection systems. Importantly, the final development permit for the pipelines incorporated the design features in the 1985 EIR, including effective cathodic protection as conditions of the permit. However, following the 2015 Refugio spill, the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration determined that cathodic protection system on this pipeline is ineffective. It further found that cathodic protection cannot be effective in buried insulated pipelines such as these. Nonetheless, Sable intends to restart rather than replace the existing pipeline system, and instead of correcting the pipeline's corrosion issues, is seeking a way away from cal fire for the limited effectiveness of cathodic protection. Again, the permit for these pipelines explicitly requires that they have effective cathodic protection. Should Sable restart the pipelines without such protection, it would be in violation of the permit, warranting further enforcement action from the Coastal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeremy Franco, followed by Ken Hoff and Adam Leverance. Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Morning. My name's Jeremy Franco. I'm an attorney with the Environmental Defense Center, Santa Barbara-based nonprofit. You've heard a lot about Sable and the risks of its restart plan, so I'm not going to reiterate that, but I would like to focus on just how much Santa Barbara County is letting us down here in this community. I think, as you know, the county has abdicated its responsibility to oversee certain aspects of Sable's restart project, and it's allowed Sable to conduct extensive excavations along the Gaviota Coast without any regulatory oversight. So, we've been concerned that Sable's work, which constitutes development, is farming environmentally sensitive habitats, wetlands and streams, and cultural resources. So, like many others, we want to thank the Coastal Commission staff for stepping in to fill that jurisdictional void left by the county and for the urgency with which they've addressed the issue. However, we are disappointed with Sable's reluctance thus far to cooperate with the commission. It's our understanding, for example, that to date, Sable has not even applied for the CBPs that the commission has said are required here. And notably, Sable has left open sewers along the Gaviota Coast ahead of the rainy season in areas that are especially sensitive to erosion. And the longer Sable refuses to cooperate with the commission, the longer it unnecessarily prolongs endangerment of nearby residents, property, and environmentally sensitive habitats. So, we sincerely appreciate the commission's effort or enforcement of the Coastal Act, and we want to encourage the Coastal Commission to remain vigilant. Like my colleague Brian said, we do think that a CDP is required for restart and that restarting the pipelines without effective cathodic protection would violate the CDP for the Los Flores Pipeline System. And so, we want to encourage the commission to evaluate all aspects of the restart project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Hoff. You're free to unmute and turn on your video if you'd like, followed by Adam Leverance and Susan Simon.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm Ken Hoff, co-executive director of Santa Barbara County Action Network. We're a membership organization with several hundred members from throughout Santa Barbara County, and for 22 years, we've worked to promote social and economic justice, create sustainable communities, and to preserve our environmental and agricultural resources. Our members fear that these resources will be imperiled by Sable's proposal to restart this pipeline without effective cathodic protection, despite the fact that that's a required element of the permit of the pipelines. Thank you for enforcing the Coastal Act, even while Santa Barbara abdicated its responsibility to do so. We are represented by EDC, so I won't repeat what you just heard from the two previous speakers, and I support what 20 other speakers have said already, that we understand that Sable still has not submitted applications for coastal development permits for its valve and repair work, which are required, and you've said it's required. So, it's unnecessarily prolonging the danger that their excavations pose to nearby residents, property, and environmentally sensitive habitats in the coastal zone. My last point may be outside of your purview, but I'm an inland resident in Santa Maria Valley, and I want to note that Sable continues to work on the pipeline over 100 other miles outside of the coastal zone without regulatory oversight at all. There's no agency that seems to have authority over the inland pipeline repairs. So, this is all the more reason why SB Can urges your commission to be ever vigilant regarding this irresponsible operator. At this point in time, your commission appears to have the most regulatory oversight, and thank you very much for your good work and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Leverance, followed by Susan Simon and Samantha McDonald. Adam, whenever you're ready.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay over the wind?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I have some slides I'd like called up as I get started, please. At the Coastal Commission meeting down in the San Diego area on October 9th, coastal commissioners, after the report from the State Lands Executive Officer on the City of Newport Beach's management of granted lands, mention was made of market rates, with one commissioner saying, "It's not the boat owner's fault that now the city is catching up," quote-unquote, "to what market is." The first graphic I have up is a staff report from the State Lands Commission dated June of 2022, and the State Lands Commission approximately every five years, they analyze and set market rates. And this is for Orange County. It's a benchmark rate for moorings and piers, and they indicate that it's fiscally wise to do this for broad categories of users across the state. And as Ms. Lucchese said, they're experts at it. So, right now, residential pier permities in Newport Beach by the State Lands Benchmark that's currently in effect pay 26% higher than the state benchmark, but as I think you've learned, they don't pay for the space their boats occupy. So, essentially, they're paying, in the worst-case scenario, 20% of the benchmark, while offshore mooring permities are currently paying 268 to 294% higher than the current state benchmark. So, when the city tries to convince you that rates haven't caught up, that is less than accurate, and I do thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Simon, followed by Samantha McDonald and Jennifer Creston.
Good morning, Coastal Commissioners. My name is Susan Simon, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today regarding our concerns about the Port of San Diego's Portmaster Plan Update, which is intended to replace their current Portmaster Plan that was approved in 1981. One of our areas of concern surrounds the environmental impact of the port's plan. Specifically, the PMPU is not valid because the incorrect version of the PMPU was evaluated, which resulted in incorrect information being analyzed in the PEIR. Additionally, two entire sub-districts were not included in the PMPU and thus were not analyzed, which makes the resulting evaluation incomplete and untrustworthy. The port also tries to hide the fact that they selected a developer for the Central Embarcadero in 2016, years before these analyses occurred, by stating in the PMPU that the Central Embarcadero will remain the same as it is today. This would make this the third area that was omitted in the PEIR analysis. Utilizing the developer's estimated increase in traffic to the area of up to 4 million people per year, the traffic evaluation in the PER is pure fiction, since the analysis did not include these figures. Worse, traffic without the Central Embarcadero redevelopment was already found to be significant and unavoidable after mitigation. The port has stated they have no plan to ensure this area does not become gridlocked. The PEIR is also riddled with conflicting numbers, such as the number of hotel rooms in various sub-districts, making it impossible to know which figures were used in assessing the environmental impacts. Despite these gross issues, the PEIR for the PMPU still concluded that approximately 80% of the areas evaluated would result in significant and unavoidable or significant outcomes after mitigation. The PMPU should improve, not exacerbate, conditions, and is the port's responsibility to ensure that is the outcome. We urge you to require the port to meet its obligations and to stop enriching itself to the detriment of Californians. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Samantha McDonald, followed by Jennifer Creston and Maura O'Neil.
Hi, my name is Samantha McDonald. I am a livaboard in the Newport Beach Mooring Field Community, and I live on a sailboat with my partner. Thank you for letting me speak. This is my second time speaking at these meetings about the moorings. While the City of Newport Beach and their city council attempted to pass a proposal to increase mooring rates that was paused by the State Lands Commission, they also made a last-minute pivot behind closed doors to convert all low-cost mooring permits to high-cost mooring licenses. This concept was not made public until one day prior to the city council meeting where they voted, and it would not only increase the rates and discriminate against tidland users, it would eradicate the livaboard community by making it no longer available to live on your boat. The livabords are a highly regulated and a functional community. We all pay our rent as required by the tidland charter. We get our boats inspected regularly by the harbor department with environmental protections. We pay for waste disposal and pump-out services. Our boat, in particular, is completely off-grid. We run on solar. We make our own rot water through reverse osmosis. We kayak to and from shore, and we move with the wind. I am really unaware of any adverse environmental impacts from our wonderful community of livabords, and I don't understand why the city continues to try to terminate us from the community. I suppose that the city has decided that only uber-wealthy people can live on or near the water in Newport Beach. The last-minute action taken by the city to terminate the existing permit program is quite complicated, and I believe deserves time for deliberation, and the State Lands Commission has a lot on their plate, and it appears they don't have the capacity to address this issue as much as they are directly on discrimination, which I understand, it's a big case. However, I don't think the questions of livabords can be avoided and go away anytime soon. So, my question to the California Coastal Commission is, has the commission determined what their legal capacities are for this case, and if there are legal capacities they can use to protect livabords to prevent eradication? Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Jennifer Creston, followed by Maura O'Neil and Mark Raniac.
Hi, do you have my video? It's not a video, just a PDF that I sent in. Can you hear me?
No, it doesn't seem like we have the PDF.
Okay, well, then I'll just start talking. I'm talking on behalf of Newport Beach mooring holders, and I want to thank you for paying close attention to our concerns. We're very grateful, and after looking at several of your agendas, I personally am very impressed by the variety and number of situations and concerns that are the responsibility of the commission. I'm also blown away by how wide and diverse the scope of your efforts is. 840 miles is a lot of coastline, and there's an amazing number of nuanced issues that the CCC deals with, but I guess you know that. We're also grateful for State Lands staff's comments at the October Coast Meeting in support of the following concerns. There is an inequity and equity slash fairness issue occurring in Newport with respect to the costs charged to mooring permities versus those charged to waterfront homeowners and commercial businesses for their piers and docks. SLC staff have significant expertise in appraising moorings and piers, and they always price moorings at a fraction of piers' docks. Unfortunately, the City of Newport Beach has reversed this equitable pricing over a decade and was about to make it worse. We sincerely hope that the CCC and the SLC will help us convince the City of Newport Beach that it is unfair to convert low-cost mooring permits to high-cost mooring licenses that they will then own. Thank you again for protecting affordable boating in Newport Beach.
Thank you. Next, we have Maura O'Neil, followed by Mark Raniac and Mark Riddenbaum.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Maura O'Neil. I'm a policy analyst for Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of tenants, housing activists, and community members who conduct data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry. We support policies that include true home sharing and hosted-only rentals as the best way forward to balance affordable public access for coastal visitors and affordable housing needs in the coastal zone. Today, I'd like to speak on general public comment regarding the Short-Term Rental Benchmark Report produced by Granicus and how the conclusions in this report can apply to the California coastal zone. According to the report, the size of global, the global short-term rental market is now 20 times larger than it was in 2011, with over 256,000 listings here in California alone. This increase in short-term rentals has especially affected communities with less than 10,000 residents, of which there are many in the California coastal coastline. These communities have significantly higher levels of short-term rentals per capita. The report looks at roughly 99 units per 1,000 people versus 4 units per 1,000 people in larger cities. The Granicus report also finds that short-term rentals can exacerbate existing housing shortages, increase the cost of rents, drive out renters who work in the local economy, and increase strain on municipal services. That's why the study states that an effective regulation is vital to the health of the local economy and quality of life for residents. Better Neighbors L.A. advocates for true home sharing and hosted-only rentals, which ensures a healthy balance between allowing coastal accommodations for visitors and ensuring that residents can stay in their homes. When you revisit local short-term rental regulations in the future, please consider a regulatory framework that emphasizes true home sharing and hosted-only rentals to protect the coast, its residents, and its visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Raniac, followed by Mark Riddenbaum and John Dow. Mark, whenever you're ready.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Raniac. I am a member of the San Diego Embarcadero Coalition. I strongly urge the commission to reject San Diego's Portmaster Plan Update because it emits clearly foreseeable enormous environmental harm proposed by their agent, One Highway One, and cannot be allowed to postpone its impact under and cannot be allowed to postpone its impact under California law. As shown in the slide, the port's real plan for this report, San Diego project, will add well over 2 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent to the atmosphere with its monstrous 2.7 million-square-foot redevelopment project, as shown in the 2023 NOP, compared to their clearly false statement in the PMPU that there will be, quote, "no changes to Seaport Village", and their flawed PEIR analysis using an outdated, much smaller 1.3 million-square-foot 2016 project. Also, as shown in this chart, compared to the 2016 plan, which isn't even included in their PMPU, the real plan adds 2 and 1/2 times the annual CO2 equivalent from operations and double the construction-phase CO2 equivalent. These are clearly foreseeable environmental impacts, and their complete omission in the PMPU are absolutely grounds for rejection per code. I urge you to consider carefully the deception the port is trying to promulgate on the commission and reject the highly flawed San Diego Portmaster Plan update. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Dow, followed by Susie Whitelaw and Marcy Snyder.
Oh, commissioners, John Dow of Save Our Beaches San Clemente. San Clemente's five miles of coastline is known for its affordability, public access, world-renowned surf breaks, and a rail line that bisects a narrow beach to the west and coastal bluff to the east. This precious coastline continues to be under assault by OCTA. For years, OCTA has circumvented the permitting process to dump beach-destroying boulders onto San Clemente's beaches. 20% of our beaches are gone, and more are threatened. This is being done with taxpayer dollars despite there being a better alternative, sand replenishment. OCTA has now secured, slide two, please. OCTA has now secured more than $300 million for rail resiliency. The projects related thereto are not scheduled to be completed until December 2027. These projects include additional hard-arming, which are three winter storm seasons away from completion. It's too much time and more of the wrong approach. Why it's wrong? Slide three. The riprap exacerbates erosion in front of their boulder piles and to the sides thereof. Next slide, please. To slides thereof through scouring and sanddrift interruption, resulting in a beach-destroying doom loop as they react to their erosion-causing rock piles with more rock. Furthermore, their boulders do not prevent the intrusion of water landward into the bluff-toe subsurface, which causes the landslide-inducing liquefaction that has been the reason for the significant number of closures in San Clemente. Why San Clemente is the right solution? Slide four. It is the least environmentally damaging practical alternative at no additional cost. It is the most effective way to protect the tracks on both sides, as proven for the last 100 years. And most importantly, it serves the greatest common good and can happen quickly. We're asking OCTA to do what is right and to pursue the solution that provides the greatest public benefit and doesn't destroy public beaches. Through a collaborative approach, everyone's objectives are achievable. We are asking the commission to say no to any future harm armory, including, under any requested emergency permits, require sand replenishment that starts now, and require meaningful and restorative mitigation for the beach destruction in South San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susie Whitelaw, followed by Marcy Snyder and Wade Womack.
Hello, I'm Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches. Does the south end of San Clemente, which experienced significant erosion in 2020 and 2021, erosion it had experienced before and had recovered from before? Unfortunately, OCTA's response was to dump tens of thousands of tons of rock on the beach. Next slide, please. Three years later, the presence of the rocks has not allowed the beach to recover. OCTA has not yet mitigated this enormous environmental harm. We have been told by staff that in-lu fees could be astronomical and that the commission doesn't usually charge fees to public agencies. Next slide, please. But OCTA is very good at getting public taxpayer funding. Unfortunately, they want to use that money to dump almost 100,000 tons of rock across another 2/3 mile of San Clemente State Beach. After our protest, they included a one-time placement of an inadequate amount of sand, even though their CEO has said money is no object. Next slide, please. This is a map of the paradise that they want to pave over. Note the red arrow indicating hotspot number four. The houses on the bluff above that red arrow just got notices that the railroad will be shut down this weekend for work. Usually, that means that they're going to be dumping rocks, and I really hope that's not the case. Because the permit application isn't limited to that red arrow, this entire map area is slated to be covered with rock under their permit application. Note the large campground in the middle. This would be the death of San Clemente State Beach. The commission's very dedicated staff came out this week to view the conditions here. They told us how concerned you are. We appreciate your attention. And for the upcoming permit hearing, please use your authority to demand that OCTA maintain a wide sandy beach in front of any rock that they continue to dump on our beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcy Snyder, followed by Wade Womack and Luke Aronson.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. My name is Marcy Snyder, and I live in the small city of Fort Bragg. And I'm here today to thank you for persevering with the city of Fort Bragg in lawsuits against Mendocino Railroad as well as counterlawsuits that they are bringing against both Fort Bragg and the California Coastal Commission. The court has concluded, two courts, the Superior Court of Mendocino County, as well as the U.S. District Court, the Northern District of California, have both said that the court has concluded that Mendocino Railroad is, quote, "simply a luxury sightseeing excursion service with no connection to interstate commerce." Mendocino Railroad is claiming that it has the capacity to move freight and passengers around and that they do indeed connect to state and interstate commerce, which they clearly don't because there's collapsed tunnel. They can't go anywhere, and then there's no other railroad to connect to on the eastern side. I want to thank you for your continued support of our coast and of our community and of all the communities. I hear similar issues up and down the coast of a corporation trying to bulldoze their way to get whatever it is they want to do without any kind of oversight or permitting. I deeply value all of you. I do want to bring to your attention briefly that the train is court shopping, they're judicial shopping, for a judge that will rule in their favor, wasting taxpayers' dollars. This is a tactic that is not to our benefit, for sure. Anyway, thank you so very much, all of you. Keep up the good work, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Wade Womack, followed by Luke Aronson and Margaret Malloy.
Can you hear me? And can you please post my PDF?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Chair Hart and commissioners. My name is Wade Womack, avid boater and Newport Beach resident. Thank you for looking after the working-class boaters in Newport. I'm grateful for SLC's staff's initial comments and to affirm various concerns related to mooring rates in Newport Harbor. This slide shows the last-minute pivot that occurred at the city council meeting in July. The agenda item advanced from the City Harbor Commission was supposed to be specific to mooring rates. However, without proper process, such as robust stakeholder input, city staff presented an alternate recommendation to convert low-cost mooring permits to high-cost mooring licenses, which was disclosed only one business day prior to the council meeting. This last-minute plan would begin the process of updating mooring rates through the subtle change. As you can see in this image, the conversion does not justify a rate increase to an already aggrieved party, given it is the same amenity with only a different name. Equally important, this pivot will reduce many other established rights and privileges for the existing mooring holders. I believe coastal staff will ultimately conclude mooring users have been overcharged for mooring permits for the last decade, and the problem was about to get worse. How do we fix this? The starting point will be to simply protect existing low-cost mooring permits and the various rights and privileges that come with them. Over the next months, the city may attempt to justify this conversion retroactively with a host of development ideas, concepts. As these CDPs are processed, I hope staff will ask, is this a solution looking for a problem? Please protect low-cost mooring permits in Newport, and thank you for protecting access to our coast.
Thank you. Next, we have Luke Aronson, followed by Margaret Malloy.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Chair Hart and fellow commissioners. My name is Luke Aronson. I'm a marine biologist and current graduate student at the Scripps Institute of Oceanography and a resident of San Diego. Though it was already briefly discussed on Wednesday, I want to bring up the issue of the Tijuana River again, just as I have a point that I think is seldom discussed, as well as a specific action that I think this commission would find valuable. Not only is this a public health crisis, but it's an ecological one as well, as the health of the Tijuana River estuary is being severely impacted. Estuaries provide low-cost recreation areas for the public, and countless studies detail the mental health benefits of exploring natural areas and the benefits that has for city dwellers. And these are benefits that now local residents are being deprived of. Concurrently, the protected waters of the estuary provide a nursery for many young fish, some of which are species that are relied upon by recreational and commercial fishers. The degradation of this essential habitat will decrease fish stocks, thus harming those who rely on this fishing industry, as well as decreasing the tax revenue the city generates from this industry. If funds from the state Proposition 4 are to be used on this issue, I implore you to allocate a portion of those funds to go directly to rehabilitating the estuary ecosystem. Finally, I believe this new president-elect offers you an opportunity as his apparent disdain for the southern border could be easily leveraged to get him to take action. I urge you to preemptively send a letter similar to the ones that the State Lands Commission just sent to President Biden to now-President-elect Trump, asking for emergency funding, but do so in a way that fits his border security agenda and makes him think that he alone could be the hero that could stop this flow of sewage across our southern border. In summary, I hope you seriously consider the allocation of funds towards estuary rehabilitation, and I hope you see the benefit in utilizing the new president's predilections to end this calamity once and for all. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Then we have Margaret Malloy, and we'll move on to speakers we can't locate. Margaret, whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you. I thought you were going to unmute me somehow. Okay, hello, commissioners. Thank you for what you do. As you all know, since 1978, the City of Los Angeles has operated a city coastal development program per Coastal Act Section 30600.5B as a delegate authority of the commission. The city must comply with the existing law, and the commission must enforce existing law. In fact, it would make the job of the commission easier to simply point to existing law. This includes a mandatory five-day notice requirement to the commission of the city's issuance of a local permit. On 5/25/2023, the commission's staff report for the Second Amendment to the city CDP stated, "Since 1978, the City of Los Angeles has been issuing CDPs throughout the jurisdiction under the provisions of the Coastal Act Section 30600B. The city is the only jurisdiction in state that issues its own CDPs prior to certification of its LCP." You know how often you hear from Venice, "We are so frustrated." I think you've all heard of the extreme corruption in land use and planning development in the City of Los Angeles. It did not stay in downtown L.A. This has trickled throughout the system that we deal with. So in this context, Public Resource Code 30620.5 states, "Every local government exercising the option provided by Subdivision B of 30600 or acting on a coastal development permit prior to certification of its local coastal program pursuant to Sections 30520, 30600.5, and 30624 shall, within five working days, notify the commission and any person..."
Thank you. I'll call the speakers on Zoom that we can't locate. If you hear your name, please use the raise hand function. We have Frank Lorch, Michael Spano, and Mark Riddenbaum. See one raise hand? I'll promote you. I'll allow you to speak, and please state your name for the record. Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Michael Spano. I have some visual aids that I would like to show to the commissioners this morning.
Okay, we'll bring that up. Oh, we haven't received it, actually.
Oh, okay, I sent it through email.
Yeah, we don't have it.
Oh. Okay, I also received the confirmation that it was received. Okay, well, let me make my time matter here. Good morning, commissioners and esteemed Chair Hart. I came to you today with the intention to express gratitude and inspire hope. I'm trying to welcome back Captain here from Newport Beach moorings aboard the Patricia Anne. They successfully returned from French Polynesia after 21 days and 21 hours, sailing with nothing but the wind and the sun. My partner and I crewed on Patricia Anne for 700 of those nautical miles in French Polynesia, helping better position her for the Long Pacific Crossing and affecting repairs to her systems and sails. My message today is pretty simple. As human beings, we share an astonishing world. I had images of French Polynesia to kind of wow you guys, but you'll have to just imagine it for now. The biodiversity in these hard-to-reach places is awe-inspiring, and it helps us remember what healthy ocean populations look like when development hasn't ruined it. But most of this heritage we will not be able to experience. The world is simply too big, and sailboats are simply too slow. So I'd like to congratulate Dale Winston, the captain of Patricia Anne, for taking the plunge and fulfilling his lifelong dream. Dale is just a regular guy that worked at his church for most of his life. On his journey to French Polynesia, he made sure to share it with family, friends, and even neighbors like me. Dale is an inspiration to many other boaters in our community, showing us what is possible if we set our eyes on the horizon. But none of this would have been possible for regular people like us if we didn't have access to affordable boating. Although a lifestyle like this is not without its sacrifices, I am still so grateful for Newport Beach's moorings and their liveaboard permit system. I ask you to help protect California's maritime culture by preserving liveaboard sailing communities that are alive and thriving here in Newport Beach. Thank you for your attention this morning.
All right. And then, Michael, we just want to note that we did find your presentation. It was sent to us under a different name, and it will be posted on our CalSpan with, yeah. Great, thank you. We'll have it on record.
So sorry about that. Thank you, Chris. All right, folks, that is going to be our last public speaker this morning. I'm now going to return back to the commission for any commissioner comments, beginning with Commissioner Striplin.
Morning, everyone. Just first of all, thanks to everyone that came up from the south, especially all the grandmas. I know it's a long trip, and our work only improves here the more we know about what you think and how our decisions affect you. So thanks for being here in person. I know it's a sacrifice. And I also wanted to address the comments made by Eric Martinez, former coastal commissioner, commission employee. I was a state employee for a decade, and I can personally attest to the veracity of everything he said. One of the challenges we experience here in the state of California is retaining a highly passionate and qualified and well-compensated scientific workforce. There's some pay inequities, compensation inequities, that take place in state government, and they're very challenging to overcome. It's very challenging to get budget change proposals approved by the Department of Finance and Cal-HR and all these agencies. The bureaucracy gets very stuck. And to be honest, the political idea of compensating public employees better does not sell to a lot of constituencies. So if, you know, in support of Eric and what he said and all of the other employees, you know, at the commission and throughout state government, we need your help. You know, they need your help. Talk to your elected representatives. These are serious issues that really challenge the state in being able to retain a really highly qualified, effective scientific workforce. And so if I can just send a message to all of you out there is, contact your elected officials, because that's the only way it's ever going to change.
Thank you, Commissioner Nodoff.
I too wanted to thank the grandmas. Here's, I'm a grandma.
I too wanted to thank the grandmas. Here's... I'm a grandma, too, and I appreciate making the trek. I personally experienced the Refugio spill in 2015, and certainly the Santa Barbara's birth often cited as the birthplace of modern environmental movement with the original oil spill in the 60s. So I do look forward to hearing the report from our enforcement staff as to what is going on with the Sable pipeline, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Right, Vice Chair Scalante.
Well, I would just wanted to express my gratitude back to everyone who came and has given their moral support to the commission, especially during this time. It matters to us a lot to hear from you, and we really, really appreciate it. So thank you back.
All right. Thank you all so much. That will be the end of public comment. And as I mentioned before, I'm going to trail Items 5, 6, and 7 for our enforcement report, which is Item 8. Lisa Hagie is here, our chief enforcement officer, to give a report.
Thank you very much, Chair and commissioners. In today's presentation, as required by Section 30809 of the Coastal Act, we'd like to report on an executive director's cease and desist order that the executive director issued on Tuesday of this week, November 12. And as you know, just as an aside, we're very lucky that our executive director came from the Energy Department in the commission and is an expert on many of these issues, and we work closely with her and her staff. The order was issued to address an urgent situation that arose as a result of unpermitted activities and to provide authorization for interim steps that were needed to avoid further resource damage until a more permanent fix, and any required entitlements to authorize such a fix can be secured, as we'll explain in a minute. As the commissioners may recall from the public comment at the October hearing when it was first raised to our attention, and is also mentioned in our enforcement report that month, we've been working diligently to resolve the situation resolving unpermitted activities by the entity called Sable. These activities included excavation with heavy equipment, removal of major vegetation, grading and widening of roads, installation of metal plates across watercourses, as well as removal of portions of the pipeline in at least one location, and installation of safety valves. The development has taken place within the coastal zone at various locations along the Lost Flores Pipelines, CA 324 and CA 325, apparently in connection with proposed future restart of the larger Santa Ynez unit, which consists of three offshore platforms, the Lost Flores Canyon Processing Facility and associated electrical transmission, and offshore and onshore oil and gas transport pipelines. At present, the sites consist of a number of open pits and piles of material, which create a significant threat of coastal resource damage, particularly in light of the upcoming rainy season. If there are heavy rains, there would be the potential to fill the open sites with water and create additional erosion, creating further damage to the sites and/or neighboring properties, including land that belongs to the Land Trust of Santa Barbara and several privately-owned ranches. After initially learning of the unpermitted development activities being undertaken by Sable Offshore Corporation, who is the current owner and operator of the Santa Ynez unit, commission staff began working with Sable in an effort to gain greater understanding of the full scope of the work being undertaken and to create a path forward that would allow for safely, efficiently, and quickly filling in the excavated holes, installing temporary erosion control measures, and securing the site during the intermediate time needed for Sable to provide information as to the full scope of their plans and of the work being undertaken, and to obtain any necessary coastal act authorizations. The one positive thing I will say is that we understand that Sable plans to comply with this order, which we appreciate, and we look forward to working with them to getting the measures in place very quickly. The deadlines in the orders, which Stephanie will talk about in a minute, are very short. I want to note that this presentation today does not include the entirety of the legal analysis or factual issues or overall issues regarding pipeline safety, because these may be returning to you as a commission to make decisions in the future and in the form of either a CDP application or a commission order, or most likely both. The presentation today will be given by enforcement counsel Stephanie Cook, and I note that Deputy Chief Counsel Alex Huprin is also available for questions. Stephanie?
We do have a presentation. If we could stand up.
Yes, we have a presentation. If we could put that up, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So under Section 13187B of the commission's regulations, as Lisa said, we're required to report at the next commission hearing whenever the executive director issues an executive director cease and desist order, which for shorthand I'll call an EDCDO. In this case, she issued an EDCDO directing Sable, the owner of the pipeline, to cease and desist from undertaking any further unpermitted development along the Lost Flores Pipelines and to immediately undertake steps necessary to avoid further damage to coastal resources in the intermediate term. That includes backfilling the open pit sites to ensure the pipelines are supported and to prevent the holes from filling with water in the event of rain, and to prevent the erosion of the piles of excavated materials. In addition, the order requires Sable to create an interim erosion control plan. That includes installing appropriate erosion control best management practices and the application of a hydroseed mixture comprised of native plant species in areas where vegetation was mowed or removed to provide additional erosion control. Finally, the order directs Sable to apply for coastal development permits for after-the-fact authorization for work that has already occurred and for any future development that would require coastal act authorization. Through this process, as Lisa mentioned, we've communicated with local landowners, including the Land Trust for Santa Barbara County and local private property owners who have shared their concerns, which we echo, and we've tried to incorporate their concerns in our plans as we move forward to quickly and safely address the open pit sites and prevent any further damage, especially in light of the upcoming rainy season. We drafted the EDCDO to address these concerns. And next slide, please. The authority for the executive director to issue the EDCDO is found in Section 30809 of the Coastal Act, and a summary of that section is shown here on this slide. The executive director may issue an EDCDO when she determines that there has been or is a threat of unpermitted development that may require coastal act authorization or development that is inconsistent with a previously issued CDP. Under Section 30809(c), an EDCDO can include terms and conditions that the executive director determines are necessary to avoid irreparable injury. I want to note that the EDCDO generally expires after 90 days... Or I'm sorry, expires after 90 days after issue, so it'll apply through most of the upcoming rainy season as we continue to work with Sable on a more long-term solution. It is therefore intended to be a temporary order to address short-term issues like these where there's not sufficient time to bring a formal commission hearing. However, this order can be extended consistent with applicable regulations if necessary. Next slide, please. So as we've seen from public comment this morning, and we've heard, this specific case has generated a lot of interest in the public because of the history of this pipeline system. As it's been mentioned today, the 2015 pipeline... There was a spill in 2015 when the pipeline ruptured, spilling over 142,000 gallons of oil into the coast and into the ocean, as you can see on this slide. The spill, which was the result of a corroded pipeline, was catastrophic and caused significant damage of at least 150 miles of coastline, forced closure of many public beaches, caused tremendous loss of wildlife, and generated millions of dollars in cleanup costs. Next slide, please. In September, commission staff were notified of the development being undertaken along the Lost Flores Pipeline, which is part of the larger Santa Ynez unit. Upon receiving this information, commission staff reached out to Sable to confirm that the reported development was actively being undertaken. At this time, staff confirmed that the development had occurred in the coastal zone without coastal act authorization, and that development included but is not necessarily limited to, as Lisa mentioned earlier, excavation with heavy equipment, removal of vegetation, grading and widening of roads, installation of metal plates over watercourses, de-watering and discharging of water, pipeline removal, replacement, and reinforcement, and installation of safety valves. On September 27, commission staff sent Sable a notice of violation letter asking Sable to immediately cease all work and to provide information as to the scope of the work and to submit an after-the-fact coastal development permit application to seek authorization for unpermitted development which had been previously undertaken. Next slide, please. In the days following the issuance of our September 27 notice of violation letter, commission staff and Sable met multiple times to discuss the state of the open pit sites located along the pipeline. In response to that letter, Sable informed commission staff that all work had ceased, with the exception of what they described as interim measures. Commission staff, again, met with Sable to reiterate the immediate need for the stop of all work, including any interim measures. Staff then followed up with a letter requesting written assurances to be provided no later than 2:00 p.m. on October 4 that all work had in fact ceased. And again, in this letter, we also requested information that would allow the commission would allow commission staff to better understand the full scope of work being undertaken along the pipeline. Despite receiving word from Sable that all work, including any interim measures, had ceased before that 2:00 p.m. deadline, we continued to receive reports throughout the day that work was still ongoing. So later that day, staff again sent another message to Sable asking for further written assurances that all work had ceased, to which Sable replied, "All work had ceased." However, a full response to the information request has yet to be provided, and Sable has not provided any confirmation of commitment to apply for a CDP at this time. And therefore, Sable did not respond in a satisfactory manner, as defined in our regulations and the ED issued this EDCDO. Next slide, please. As you can see in this slide, before work fully ceased, open pit sites were dug and work had already been undertaken on the pipeline, creating a potentially dangerous situation with potential to create further damage to coastal resources, particularly in light of the upcoming rainy season. Because of the state of the open pit sites, immediate action was required to safely secure those sites and surrounding areas. Next slide, please. As we've seen here today, this has been a very complicated situation. There are numerous factors, and has had a great deal of public interest. Enforcement staff have worked closely with our energy group here at the commission to craft potential solutions toward temporary measures that would allow for the safe securing of the sites. We have also similarly worked with Sable to find that solution to temporarily secure the sites safely. Throughout these conversations, we focused specifically on finding a solution that would allow Sable to implement those measures in a legal way that would prevent further damage to coastal resources. Unfortunately, after our attempts over the last couple of weeks, including throughout Veterans Day weekend, we were unable to reach agreeable terms that would allow for a consent EDCDO. However, we do appreciate their involvement in this process, and we look forward to working with them to fully address the situation in a future order. Next slide, please. The EDCDO may be followed by a future commission action. However, due to the immediate concerns surrounding safety and protection of the coastal resources, we were concerned to get this EDCDO out for immediate action. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cook, and thank you for all your work on this, to our executive director, Ms. Hagie, and your entire... I hate to say your entire team, because I know how small your team is. Makes it sound like you're a team of thousands, and you know, you just do such an amazing job with the few people you have, so thank you so much. I'm going to return to the commission. Commissioner Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, Ms. Hagie and your small team and staff. So I just want to start with a couple of questions, and I'm hoping to get a little bit more clarity, because there is, as you stated, so much interest, particularly in Santa Barbara County, about how and why we have found ourselves in this position. So what I'm still struggling with a bit is the jurisdictional issues. What are the elements that are within our purview, and what are the elements that are within the county purview? And what opportunities do we have perhaps to assist the county in doing this work or facilitating this or not, to make sure that it's done legally, I guess, is my question. There seems to be some inconsistency there, and I think a lot of us are struggling to understand what the options are and what that relationship might be.
Thank you, Commissioner, the chair. One of the problems that we were having originally was trying to figure out what was going on and where it was located, and that was why we focused so much on enforcement... Excuse me, information inquiries to the operator in the first place. We've worked closely with the county. The county is aware of what we're doing, and we think that there are opportunities for coordination and cooperation going forward. We believe that some of it may be in our original jurisdiction. Certainly, much of it is in our appeals jurisdiction, and we're trying to work that out. But both the work that's already taken place and the work that hasn't yet been completed, that they hope to complete, definitely involves things that would be appealable and likely appealed to the commission. So we're trying to work with them and figure out what's the most expeditious way to get it addressed.
So there may be an opportunity for a consolidated permit process that would, I imagine, serve all parties?
There's certainly... Yes, the Coastal Act, you know, we added about two years ago the provision that provides for consolidated permits, and it's a very good vehicle when all the parties agree. Under the statute, they do have to all agree, and the county, I think, would be happy with that. We have not had extensive discussions with Sable, but we certainly have suggested to them that that's an avenue that exists.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and I share the strong desire that that would be the path that would be taken. And my other question is permit-related. To the extent... Is it necessary that we have a separate permit application for the repairs that are currently being undertaken? Is that different from the consolidated process that the parties might agree to, or is that part and parcel of the same thing?
It could be done any way. The order that we issued did require them to come forward with a CDP, both for the work that's already been done and what they're planning on doing. They characterize the entire project as repair and maintenance. And so they... But certainly, the work that's been done so far requires an after-the-fact permit, and some of it was definitely new development, and I think that they've acknowledged that.
Okay. And what would the timeline... To the extent we would have any idea, but what would the timeline be on a permit like that or a consolidated process? That's a ridiculous question, I understand.
No, it's interesting, because it's in their control, and we've indicated that to them. The sooner they apply, the sooner our energy group can jump on. And we have been coordinating very closely with our energy group to try to make sure that everything that we're requiring through this EDCDO or any other enforcement action is consistent with what the commission and the law would require should they come forward with a permit. So we're trying to make sure that we're as consistent as possible, but the timing on the actual application lies with Sable.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I may make just a couple of comments, thank you. So as a Santa Barbara County resident and someone who has deep roots both in North and South County, who's really seen all sides of these issues over the years, this matters such a stark reminder to me that even in the birthplace of Earth Day, in the historical... And we really consider ourselves, as Commissioner Nodoff said, the historical and modern heart of the environmentalist movement in Santa Barbara. It is part of our DNA. So even there, it's such a stark reminder that the Coastal Act, our coastal staff, Ms. Hagie, her team, executive director Hucklebridge, this commission, we play a critical role in ensuring the safety of our coast. And to me, it's just... It's been a really, really important reminder that we can never be... The coast is always being saved, and that is absolutely true, even in a place that prides itself on our love for and protection of the coast. So I truly cannot thank our staff enough for recognizing this and acting quickly. And I have to say, I'm very, very proud to be associated with the commission today and throughout this process. So it's been a really moving thing for me to see how effective you all have been and how thoughtful you've been in protecting our county and our whole state, of course, but our county in particular. I also wanted to note, for whatever it's worth, that my hope is really that the parties will engage in the consolidated permit process. I think there's an efficiency quotient there that is valuable to everyone, including the residents who are not involved in this process at all, other than by virtue of the fact that we live in Santa Barbara County. But I also think, very, very importantly, that a process like that run through this commission will give the public and all the parties, the county, the applicant as well, a high degree of comfort that the law will be applied and, when necessary, enforced. So if anyone's listening in Santa Barbara County, I really hope that you engage on that level. And again, my sincere thanks to our team.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Harmon, and I know we all completely share your perspective. Portilia is a local elected. Thank you so much for your comments. Does that conclude... Dr. Hucklebridge?
I wanted to note, I actually do believe we have public comment on this item, so we should go and hear those public comments.
Oh, on the enforcement report?
That's correct.
Oh, good. Good to know. So let me ask, how many speakers do we have on this?
Two speakers.
All right. Let me open public comment on this item and ask for the speaker to come forward. forward. This is item eight, the enforcement report.
Both speakers are on Zoom. First, we have DJ Moore, then Molly Trup.
Each will have two minutes.
DJ, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Hart and Commissioners, DJ Moore of Latham and Watkins, on behalf of Sable Offshore. I just wanted to address the commission for a quick moment this morning. As we've discussed with commission staff during the past six weeks, I want to reiterate, Sable's commitment to working collaboratively with the commission to ensure necessary work can be completed on the Lust Flores pipelines in a manner that avoids adverse impacts to the environment and to coastal resources. I also want to confirm that Sable conducted recent maintenance activities along the pipeline system with its understanding that they were within the scope of historic activities that have been conducted on this pipeline for over 35 years, maintenance that historically has not required additional Coastal Act permitting. Sable conducted all of those activities with the utmost care for the environment under the supervision of qualified biologists and archaeologists, consistent with best management practices. As acknowledged in Sable's submissions to the commission, Sable agrees with commission staff that the open holes along the pipeline route need to be filled as quickly as possible to protect the surrounding environment and protect affected properties. We appreciate the executive director taking fast action and look forward to working with staff to agree on the terms of an interim work plan to fill those open excavations to their original condition immediately. Sable agrees with staff that this is the best way to ensure the environment is protected against erosion in the case of any upcoming rain events. Building upon that coordination, Sable looks forward to progressing our discussions with commission staff regarding how to proceed with remaining pipeline maintenance and repair work in the coastal zone. We appreciate staff's engagement and efforts to work with us to arrive at solutions for this important project for both Santa Barbara County and the state. Protecting the integrity of the coastal environment is a paramount priority for Sable and for this project. We look forward to continuing to work with you and other state and federal agencies to bring these pipelines back to better than new conditions. I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Trup. Molly, whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chair Hart and members of the commission. My name is Molly Trup, and I am the Science and Program Manager at Santa Barbara Channel Keeper, an environmental nonprofit organization based in Santa Barbara. Our mission is to protect and restore the Santa Barbara Channel and its watersheds. As you've heard extensively this morning, I am also here to thank the commission staff for their strong work enforcing the, against the egregious violations conducted in the coastal zone by Sable Offshore, and for following up with a cease and desist order when Sable continued conducting work after being informed of their violations. We support and encourage the commission to remain steadfast in upholding the law. In addition to the current valve installation that Sable is pursuing, we also encourage the commission to evaluate all aspects of the restart of this very old and corroded pipeline that is starting to spill again if it is put back into use. We appreciate you and thank you for your leadership in protecting the coast and upholding the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment on that item, and I'll bring it back to staff for us for any, any further comments.
I think that's it. If we have, if you have any more questions, we'd be happy to talk.
Okay. Thanks so much. Commissioners, anything further on this? All right, in that case, I want to just reiterate our gratitude for everyone for coming today. Thank you so much to our incredible enforcement team and our ED, and we'll look forward to hopefully some positive movement on this very serious situation. So thank you so much to everyone. That concludes item eight, the enforcement report. We're now going to, I'm going to turn to the commission and ask if you want to break, or should we just forge ahead? Short break, we're going to break for 10 minutes, we'll be back at 11:05. All right, we're going to begin the meeting, it's 11:05. Like everybody to come back, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, we're going to continue now, returning to the calendar, we're going to be on item five. Who's going to be presenting that? Carl Schwang will be doing those items.
Okay, so Carl's online?
Yes, I'm online. Thank you, good morning to everybody. So item five is the administrative calendar for all districts on the agenda today. There's two projects from Newport Beach and one from Huntington Beach. The conditions are acceptable to the applicants. We're not aware of any opposition on these matters, so we're looking for whether four or more commissioners object to the issuance of these administrative permits.
Okay, are there any speakers?
No speakers, but one person is available for questions.
All right, do any commissioners wish to remove an item? All right, seeing none, the administrative calendar is approved. We'll now move on to item six, the consent calendar.
Thank you. And on item six, there's three items from Orange County. I do want to note, comment, that we did receive comments on item 6C4, which involves the replacement of a residence in the gated Surfside community in Seal Beach. The comments we received relate to privacy concerns between the project site and neighboring homes, and disturbances associated with construction on the private neighborhood streets, which are not open to public traffic, and thus, there aren't any Coastal Act issues raised with those issues. We believe those issues should be addressed, should be addressed by the project proponent, the HOA, and potentially the city. So the conditions are acceptable to the applicants, again, no additional comments, so we're recommending these items be approved on the consent calendar.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schwang. Do any commissioners have an ex parte? All right, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
No public comments, two people are available for questions.
All right, does anyone wish to remove an item? All right, I'll consider a motion now to move the consent calendar.
Move consent, second.
Right, with motion as second, is there any opposition to unanimous approval? Seeing none, consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to item seven, consent calendar, items removed from the regular calendar.
Thank you, and today we have three items from Orange County and two from San Diego that we're recommending be moved to consent. That includes items 10A and 10B, these are LCP time extensions. Item 11A, that's the Ava Equities CDP. Item 14A, that's State Park's Stairway Project in Torrey Pines. And item 14B, State Park's project for the Cardiff State Beach Parking Lot Revetment. For the two LCP time extensions, staff recognizes that both of these amendments have to do with priority LCP updates, and we are looking to bring those forward as soon as possible, likely at the upcoming December and February hearings. Do also want to note, there's correspondence on the two State Parks items, 14A and B, from Surf Rider Foundation, which were in support of the staff recommendations and approval with conditions. So staff recommends these items get moved to the consent calendar and approved per the staff recommendations.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any ex partes? Any speakers?
No speakers, just people available for questions.
All right, does anyone want to remove an item from the items that were removed? Double remove? All right, seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
I move consent.
Second. All right, motion as second, is there any objection to unanimous approval of the motion? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved. We'll now move on to the DDR for Orange County, item nine.
Thank you. So in this packet, we are reporting the city of Newport Beach's adoption of the commission's suggested modifications related to their LCP amendment updating their provisions on density bonuses. The executive directors determine the city's actions are legally adequate to complete the certification process on that item. Report also contains two CDP extensions and five waivers for projects in Orange County. There's no known opposition, so we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the waivers in the report. And note, just to be clear, this does not include the next item, 9A, that will be reviewed separately.
Thanks, Mr. Schwang, any speakers?
No speakers, just one available for questions.
All right, do three or more commissioners object to any item on the deputy director's report? Seeing no objection, the commission concurs, and we'll move on to item 9A.
Thank you. So there is a staff PowerPoint presentation, if we can pull that up. So this, this next item is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Reinike for Coastal Commission review of the executive director's determination of the city of Laguna Beach's categorical exclusion order E931. On April 24th, the commission's South Coast office received a notice of action indicating that the city found the Reinikes' proposed addition of an 810 square foot ADU to an existing single-family residence was categorically excluded from the requirement to obtain a CDP. On May 2nd, the executive director determined that the project did not meet the requirements of the order. Next slide, please. So what is a categorical exclusion order? Coastal Act Section 30610E allows for exclusion from CDP requirements of categories of development in defined geographic areas that have no potential for significant adverse effect, either individually or cumulatively, on coastal resources or on public access. Catex orders also must include terms and conditions to assure that no significant change in density, height, or nature of uses will occur without further proceedings under the Coastal Act. The city of Laguna Beach received approval of their categorical exclusion order from the commission in 1993. Next slide. So the city's order allows single-family residential development within 11 geographic areas to be excluded from the requirement to obtain a coastal development permit. The single question that the Reinikes have requested be put before the commission today is whether the executive director was correct in interpreting the order to mean that the phrase "single-family residential development" does not encompass the addition of an ADU to a single-family residence, which in turn means that such an addition would not be covered by the order. The order does not define the term "single-family residential development." However, the plain language of "single-family residential development" does not support the inclusion of an ADU. An ADU is necessarily dependent upon another structure, and in this case, is an additional dwelling unit that is an accessory to the single-family residence. Further, the addition of an ADU is the addition of another residential unit to an existing residence. The executive director is not aware of any definition where a single-family residential development includes construction of an ADU as a single-family residence. And accordingly, the order itself does not include the addition of an ADU to a single-family residence as part of the categorical exclusion. Two comment letters were received on this item, as well as a follow-up letter from the applicant's attorney that was submitted yesterday. All of these are posted on the agenda. The letters raise a number of questions that do not relate to the question before the commission, which again, is solely related to, was the executive director's determination of the order correct? And this question is addressed in greater detail in the addendum, which is also posted on the agenda. But generally, the merits of the project or the city's action relative to the project are not before the commission in today's proceedings. Similarly, questions regarding interpretation of the city's LCP are not before the commission today. It is just the determination about the categorical exclusion order. It's worth noting that in a letter to the applicant from the city dated August 8th, 2024, the city indicated that the project could likely be processed as a waiver if the applicant were to submit an application. The next line. So staff is recommending that the commission concur with the executive director's determination. And the motion to adopt, the staff rec is on page three of the staff report, and that concludes our presentation at this time.
All right, thank you so much. Any ex partes? I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there are members of the public that would like to speak on this item.
We do have two in-person speakers. We have David Deerson and Christopher Peterson. If you hear your name, come up to the podium, please.
Okay, if you could state your name and like to ask if you need time in addition to the two minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair Hart and Commissioners, David Deerson. I may need a little bit more time than two minutes.
Okay, why don't we give you three minutes then?
That sounds good. And I'd just like to begin with a procedural note, the way that the regulation about interpretations of exclusionary orders works is if three commissioners choose to vote to review the order, then the procedure switches to a majority vote of whether or not to adopt the executive director's order. So I want to start with a framework for the best way I think there is to look at this. There's no dispute that the Reinikes' project in particular has no negative effect on coastal resources. That's confirmed by the city's offer of a minor development waiver. And there's no dispute that a single-family residential development in this exclusionary area has no negative effect on coastal resources. And there's been no suggestion that interpreting the order to include ADUs would, would have the potential for any adverse environmental effect. So, so essentially, there are no coastal resource issues at stake here. What is at stake is a vital and essential state policy of promoting urban infill development, and particularly through the construction of ADUs. So if, if there's any, to the extent there's any ambiguity in how the order is read, that ambiguity should be resolved in favor of including ADUs because there are no risks to the environment, and what's at stake is the vital and essential state policy of developing housing. And what the Reinikes are proposing to construct is a single-family residential development in the form of an ADU. It's not a duplex, not a triplex, not an apartment building, it's an attached ADU that will be occupied by a single family. And numerous sources of law indicate that an ADU that is attached to a single-family residence is part of the residence, that it is single-family development. For example, the government code provides that ADUs in a single-family zone constitute single-family residential development. This commission and its regulations that refer to the same statute under which the order was adopted also say that any attached structures to a single-family residence are part of the residence, and the Court of Appeals recently confirmed that includes attached ADUs. So contrary to staff's statement that there are no definitions of single-family development that include ADUs, I think it's quite the opposite. I think there, there are numerous such definitions throughout California law. Staff has also presented some contradictory arguments. Their, their original position was that the LCP was more restrictive than the order, but the only way for that to be true is if the order actually does permit at least some ADUs, and I would, I would say that attached ADUs are the lowest hanging fruit there. Now, staff argues that the plain language of the order does not include ADUs, but again, there's no reason to view that the language in isolation from those, from those related areas of law. So our interpretation of the order is consistent with its language, consistent with protecting coastal resources, and consistent with the essential state policy of promoting ADU development. Staff's interpretation requires ignoring related areas of law and obstructing state policy for ADU development with no benefit to coastal resources. So we ask that the commission, respectfully, we ask that the commission reject staff's and the executive director's interpretation.
Thank you. Next, we have Christopher Peterson.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Christopher Peterson. It is a pleasure to see you all in person today. I urge you to object to staff's proposed interpretation of the Laguna Beach categorical exclusion order. The interpretation that staff now proposes in the addendum is quite different from the interpretation in the original staff report. Though both reach the same conclusion, the ADUs in certain already developed areas require a CDP even when they raise no significant Coastal Act concerns. That would be the case even though other much larger detached residences in the same areas do not require a CDP. This makes no sense. Staff's interpretation rests on the assertion that the proposed ADU is not a single-family residence, but it is. It is one self-contained residential unit, would be attached to an already existing house, but the proposed development is itself one residential unit. but the proposed development is itself one residential unit. Staff's interpretation also disregards that the Commission-certified LCP expressly acknowledges that ADUs can be either exempt or excluded from CDP requirements. Under staff's current interpretation, ADUs could never be excluded despite the language of the LCP. Finally, I'd like to reiterate that the proposed ADU and others like it raise no meaningful coastal act concerns. They'd be located in already-developed residential neighborhoods that have already been identified as areas where small-scale residential development will not harm coastal resources and therefore does not require a CDP. Requiring CDPs for ADUs in those areas or requiring the city to go through another bureaucratic procedure to amend the categorical exclusion order would serve no purpose. Please reject the proposed interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude public comment? All right, I'm going to return it back to staff, to Mr. Schwing and potentially staff here in the room.
Thank you, Chair Hart. So categorical exclusion orders are powerful tools to accept development from Coastal Act review. With regard to the ADUs and the impacts, staff would argue that the, you know, ADUs, they were not evaluated by the Commission when the categorical exclusion order was originally adopted. And there is a process for that. And that would be for the city to seek an amendment to the categorical exclusion order to include the evaluation of ADUs. And, you know, with that, I don't have any further comments. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have anything further.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to add, Mr. Dearson talked about the procedures here, but we did want to be clear because this is a very unusual procedure for the Commission. So the initial question for the chair to ask other Commissioners is whether three or more Commissioners would like to review the Executive Director's interpretation. If three or more would like to review the interpretation, then the Commission will move on to deliberation over how it would like to interpret the categorical exclusion. So this is an unusual procedure. I just wanted you guys to be aware of how it goes from here. And with that, I'll conclude unless you guys have questions.
Okay, bringing it back to the Commission, I'll ask whether there are any questions. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, just a question on that process. So that review would happen now, is that correct?
Correct.
And then that's when we would have, that's when we, if I have, if any of us has actual questions about this?
You can ask questions now.
Okay.
If you'd like, and then ask whether you'd like to review, and then determine whether you want to have a review.
So the questions that we would ask now is not necessarily the review?
Correct. It's to decide whether three or more Commissioners would like to review the Executive Director's determination. So that's the initial question to debate.
Well, then, if I may through the chair, can I ask a question?
Sure, feel free.
Thanks. So first of all, is what's being, one of the things being asked is whether or not an ADU is a residential unit or counted as a residential unit? How does, can you clarify that?
No, that's not the question. It's, I understand why you're asking, though. The question is whether an ADU is considered single-family residential development under this categorical exclusion. The staff agrees that an ADU is considered a residence, a residential development, but it's not single-family residential development under this categorical exclusion, in our view.
Even though it's under a single-family residential zoning, right? Is that what?
Well, under the ADU laws, the ADU doesn't count towards density. So it is, it's effectively a second residential unit in a single-family residential zone. But because it doesn't count towards density, it doesn't violate the single-family residential zoning when you add an ADU to a single-family residence.
And then part of this goes to the question about this categorical exemption. So I hear what was said about, you know, there's no environmental impact or that's an interpretation. But then the precedent of setting, you know, who, we don't know whether there would be environmental impacts, you know, beyond the list of things, the considerations that we have. Because sometimes we've seen an interpretation meaning like, well, it's not near a wetland or this, that, and the other. But there's a whole host of other items that we would be considering. And so I'm just kind of wondering the precedent-setting nature of that in this interpretation.
I think that's a good question. And as Deputy Director Schwing said, categorical exclusions are very powerful tools. It takes a two-thirds vote of the Commission to implement a categorical exclusion. And so, and the exclusion itself talks about being construed narrowly in effect. Because it is a powerful tool, it eliminates any coastal act review over the type of development included in the CAX. And so in this, so we aren't really looking at a particular situation here. The commenters talked about whether there's an impact to the ADU that gave rise to the question. But that's not really before the Commission. The Commission is evaluating whether there could ever be a coastal resource impact from an ADU on any of the properties that are subject to the categorical exclusion. And we think that the Commission can consider that question, but it should do so in the context of amending the CAX.
Okay, I hear you now. I got it. We have work to do, is that, I mean, I guess what we'd say, but probably not in this moment, so.
That is the staff recommendation.
I hear you. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And I appreciate actually that, you know, the applicant and their advocates coming today to kind of raise this issue. We may not be able to do it in this nexus. That's kind of the way I'm at, where I'm at right now. I just don't think that the analysis is robust enough for us to get there today. But I do think there is a conversation that can be had and moving forward. And I'm looking forward to us dealing with that. And I want us to put some work into this, both as Commission, staff, and everybody else. Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask a quick question and then I'll go to Commissioner Nodoff? Is there a way that this ADU could be approved through a waiver or something of that matter at this time?
I can let Deputy Director Schwing step in as well. But the city has already told this particular applicant that it is subject to an expedited process. And my understanding from a letter that is in the record from the city is that the city tried to initiate that process at the end of June, beginning of July, and that the applicant told the city not to go ahead and send out the notices that would initiate that process because it wanted to challenge the categorical exclusion interpretation with the Commission instead.
Thank you. That's helpful. Commissioner Nodoff?
I think, just say that, you know, anyone who's been watching the Commission and looking at our agendas appreciate that the Commission is trying to move through ADUs on consent and administrative approval as much as we can. I just, I think that your answers to Commissioner Wilson's questions clarify this, but just the practical effect. I mean, we don't, I certainly don't want to make it any harder to build an ADU. In fact, I want to facilitate building ADUs in infill places in the coastal zones. So if you could just clarify the practical effect of this. And it sounds like we have an opportunity to make it easier in this process.
So in this instance, the city has a process to make it easier through waivers. And my understanding, we'd have to ask staff, is that the city has used a waiver process for ADUs in the past several months. So it is a process that is actually using. But the Commission also has an opportunity to include ADUs in categorical exclusions or to amend this LCP to have ADUs be exempt. So there's another process by which the Commission could facilitate ADUs. Our position is that this isn't the right process and that the Commission didn't evaluate ADUs at the time that this categorical exclusion was approved and that it is not included within the scope of this CAX. But it does not mean that the Commission and Commission staff are not trying to expedite ADUs and that there aren't methods to do it. We just don't think that this is the vehicle.
That we would invite the city to work with us to figure out how to do that.
Through the chair, if I might add too. I just wanted, you know, taking it even in a statewide context, staff has been working really hard to come up with guidance and thoughts about how to expedite housing, especially ADUs and other types of housing in infill places where we all agree it makes sense and doesn't raise coastal resource issues. So we have been working on guidance documents for local governments. Those are going to be out very, very shortly, that walk through the different options. You know, here's a different, here's the suite of options that a local government has, that the Commission has to expedite this type of housing development where it's appropriate. So to your point, Commissioner Wilson, we are working on that. And the Commission does have more work to do. And we'll continue to work with all of our local government partners to identify what makes sense in each particular case, whether that's, you know, updating an LCP or updating a categorical exclusion. We'll have to see which, you know, which path makes the most sense for each local government. But we want to be part of those conversations. We are initiating those conversations, not just waiting for them to happen. We're trying to get them started early with local governments. And we look forward to continuing those conversations.
Through the chair, I just, I appreciate that. And I'm hoping that we'll specifically have some time with the Housing Committee to discuss this in the very near future. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? All right. I'd like to ask whether three or more Commissioners are, would like to review the Executive Director's interpretation. All right, seeing none, the staff recommendation that the Commission concur with the Executive Director's interpretation of the categorical exclusion order E-931 as it relates to the addition of ADUs to single-family residences is approved, or we concur. Is that correct? Way to put that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that concludes that item. Next item is going to be 10A and B.
Item 12.
Item 12. All right, DDR for San Diego Coast. Thanks, Mr. Schwing.
Sure. And in this packet, we're reporting the Executive Director's approval of an emergency permit that authorized the City of San Diego to repair support for a water main and other infrastructure impacted by a failed storm drain system near the South 32nd Street Bridge in the Barrio Logan area of the city. Follow-up permit will be reviewed by the Commission at a later date. And finally, we are reporting six waivers, one immaterial permit amendment, one immaterial permit extension. I would point out that two items there relate to ADUs. So there's no known opposition. We're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to the waivers in the report.
Thank you. Any speakers?
No speakers. There's still available for comment.
Thank you. Do three or more Commissioners object to anything in the DDR? In that case, the Commission concurs. And we'll go on to what I think is our last item of the day, 13A.
That's correct. So item 13A is a new appeal submitted to San Diego Coast District. And Melody Lester with our San Diego Coast District Office is going to do the staff presentation. Go ahead, Melody.
Thanks, Carl. And good morning, Commissioners. Item 13A is an appeal of a Port of San Diego permit for the construction of a new restaurant. Staff is recommending that the Commission find the appeal raises no substantial issue. Next slide, please. The subject site is a bayfront lot developed with an existing restaurant, an office building, a parking lot, and a waterside bike and pedestrian path in the city of Coronado on Port Highlands. The project site is located southeast of the Coronado Ferry Landing, south of San Diego Bay, and north and west of multifamily residences. Next slide. The Coastal Development Permit Amendment approved by the port allows for the construction of a 23-foot-tall, 7,500-square-foot restaurant with outdoor seating areas, landscaping, and stormwater improvements. Next slide. The appellant contends that the modern design of the approved project is not consistent with the character of the existing development in the surrounding area or with the style and history of the community of Coronado. Portmaster Plan policies require development at this site to reflect concern for the surrounding area and be designed with sensitivity to nearby residents. Next slide. However, neither the Certified Portmaster Plan nor the City of Coronado's local coastal program requires a single architectural style. And the photos on this slide show that there is a mix of different architectural styles, sizes, and colors found in the development surrounding the site. The size and scale of the approved restaurant building is also smaller than the restaurant approved by the port for the site in 2008, which was described as a southwestern design. And the project includes improvements to lighting and landscaping that will enhance views to and across San Diego Bay. Next slide. The objections to the project suggested by the appellant do not raise any substantial issues of regional or state-wide significance. Thus, staff recommends that the Commission determine that the project raises no substantial issue regarding conformance with the Certified Portmaster Plan. The motion could be found beginning on page five of the staff report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any ex parte's? All right. Do we have speakers on this item?
We do have the appellant on Zoom.
All right.
Okay, Marilyn, I'm promoting you as a panelist, and we're bringing up your presentation.
Great. They'll have three minutes.
Ever you're ready, Marilyn, your presentation should be up shortly.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We're bringing up your presentation now.
Okay, the presentation runs slide after slide. This is the proposed restaurant at the Ferry Landing. These are the development standards, visually compatible surrounding area. Port in character with the adjacent community. Letter from Coronado Mayor saying, asking that this particular restaurant be designed to be compatible with the Ferry Landing buildings. These are the Ferry Landing buildings, designed to reflect our famous Hotel Dell with Victorian influences, visible from the restaurant. This is the restaurant that was shown on one of the port slides, but it's very misleading. This is the big condominium, two big condominiums adjacent to the Ferry Landing, designed to reflect Hotel Dell Victorian influences, much lauded by the coastal staff. The, I just missed the Centennial Park with the original toll booth. Townhouse, these are restaurants in the neighborhood repurposing old buildings. This is our famous Hotel Dell. Victorian influences are felt everywhere in the community. This is our shopping district, Orange Avenue. Coronado's Main Street. Note, this restaurant tried for a year to get the city to permit them to change that archway. Permission denied. Some restaurants at downtown Coronado. Lambs Player Theater in the shopping district, Coronado's Main Street. This is the historic Glorieta Bay Inn. Our historical association and our original 1909 library incorporated in our library remodel. This is Spreakles Park. Did you see that? The bandstand's still in use today. Even our police station was designed to blend in. Even our motels blend in. And so does affordable housing. Some residences near the downtown area. This shows, of course, some of, just some of Coronado's hundreds of registered historic homes. And there are many more that have not been registered on the recent survey. There were maybe 600. Coronado does not have design uniformity. Coronado has overwhelmingly early 20th century character. And anybody who'd been there would recognize it. This shows before and after community comments.
Ma'am, how much time do you need for your presentation?
Well, just give me a few more seconds.
Sure.
This slide shows Coronado Ferry This slide shows Coronado Ferry Landing going to be remodeled. That shows what it was like before community comments. Slide on the right shows what it looked like after community comments were incorporated. Community overwhelmingly wants to keep its antiquey ethos, design ethos. Coronado does not want to look like San Diego. I hope I've at least persuaded you, I've made a, raised a substantial issue. I think the standards are very clear. This is the community. Proposed restaurant does not look like the community. It's not compatible.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, do we have other speakers?
No additional speakers. We do have various members of the Port of San Diego available for questions, and also a member of the Ferry Landing in Coronado.
Okay, thank you so much. Jose, bring it back to staff, or any, anything further?
Thank you, Chair Hart. I would just point out that this project is under the Board of San Diego's Portmaster Plan Amendment, and the standard there is, as we mentioned earlier, that structures would not be higher than 40 feet and be of a high-quality design reflecting concern for the surrounding area. A lot of the structures that were noted in the PowerPoint presentation by the appellant are of the city of Coronado, and it's covered by the Coronado LCP, not the Portmaster Plan, which is the standard here. I don't know if we have any other further comments from staff? Seeing shaking heads, so nothing further.
Not looking like it. Okay, thank you very much. Bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments, or a motion, which is on page five.
I'm happy to make the motion.
All right, Commissioner Gary.
I just want to thank Ms. Field for her presentation and for sharing with us her views, which are important. I move that the commission determine that appeal number A-6-PSD-24-0040 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under section 30603 of the Coastal Act. I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any objection to unanimous approval of the motion? A yes vote on this item? Seeing none, the motion is approved, and that concludes this item, and I believe that's our final item. Wanted to thank particularly our staff, our incredible staff, and I'm so glad that you heard how the public feels about you today, and our team, AGP, you guys are just awesome, commissioners and members of the public. Thanks, everybody, so much. We will see you next month, and I think we'll, where are we going to be, Newport Beach? All right, great. See you, everyone. Thank you.